Off-street parking requirements in section 235-36 manage of the management of the parking utility with to establish a payment in lieu of required off-street parking program in the B3 Central Business District. This program would allow upon approval of the common council, property owners to make payment into a fund to assist in developing public off-street parking in the B3 Central Business District downtown in lieu of providing off-street parking onsite. So this is your chance to comment on the proposed changes to our zoning code and if you'd like to comment, come on up to the podium and give us your name and make your comments. Is there anyone here who'd like to comment tonight during this public hearing? Anyone here who'd like to comment on the proposed changes to the zoning code, payment in lieu of required off-street parking in the Central Business District? One more time, anyone here who'd like to comment tonight in our public hearing?
Move to close the hearing.
We have motion to close the hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Alright, the hearing's closed and we will call to order our meeting of the common council for April 19th. Would you all please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, would you call the roll please?
Mayor Knudson?
Here.
District one, Morissette?
Here.
District two, Brokaw?
Yes.
District three, Bernard?
Here.
District four, Wyland?
Here.
District five, O'Malley?
Here.
District six, Burchill?
Here.
Alright.
You gotta wait for the census for that man.
Yeah.
At this time, we take comments and suggestions from citizens present. If there's any citizen here who'd like to address the council on an item that is not on tonight's agenda but might have an impact on the city of Hudson or come before the council at a future meeting, this is your chance to comment. Does anyone like to speak tonight? Just step right up to the podium, sir, and give us your name and address if you will and...
Thank you. My name is Dick Hagan. I live at 522 Spruce Drive in Hudson and I'm really here to make an announcement and the announcement is of the newly forming Optimist Club of Hudson and we have a scheduled meeting tomorrow night for anyone that's interested. But I was told that I think the city council is interested in new clubs being formed in Hudson and I just speak from experiences. I was an Optimist member for over 20 years in a previous place I lived and finally, an Optimist Club is coming to Hudson. Now, what is Optimist Club? Well, they're another service organization, but they find their own niche within the community. They sponsor such things as, well, the first thing they wanna do is make kids better, whatever way that they can. They're actually Friends of Youth. And what they do is they sponsor certain activities. One of these is the essay contest, oratorical contest, junior golf tournament, respect for law, things like that, all in the interest of the community. And again, the club helps to form whichever activities they want to do in the interest of the community and in the schools. And bike safety is another area that they've worked in. So I just wanted to announce to the public and to the council that we are having our first informational meeting tomorrow night at 7:00 PM at the Citizens State Bank on 375 Stage Line Road and that starts again at 7 o'clock PM at their meeting room. And I thank you for this opportunity to bring these, this good news to the city of Hudson.
Thank you, Mr. Hagan. Anyone else like to make comments or address the council tonight on any item not on tonight's agenda? Alright, I've got a award for alderperson Pam Brokaw tonight, a plaque in appreciation for her years of service. And so Pam, in grateful recognition of your outstanding efforts as alderperson of District two, City of Hudson, town and council, and for contributions as a member of the Public Works Committee, the Hudson, North Hudson Community Access Board, and liaison to the school board from April 15, 2008 to April 19, 2010, thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, we've got some consent agenda items. There was one from finance. You've got the change on that, the postponement, so, okay. You wanna read the rest of the consent or the entire consent agenda?
To approve the regular and closed session minutes of March 29, 2010, to approve claims for payment in the amount of...
Claims will be handled tomorrow night.
We didn't, we didn't have the claims ahead of time to look at this time and we've become accustomed to that, so we decided to move it to tomorrow night's agenda.
To approve the issuance of regular operators licenses for the period April 20, 2010 to June 30, 2011 to General Daniel Claflin, Hudson, Wisconsin, Brittany Dunlap, Hudson, Wisconsin, Paige Hansen, Hammond, Wisconsin, Risa Kupker, Hudson, Wisconsin, Patricia Malone, Hudson, Wisconsin, Sarah Stolt, Hudson, Wisconsin, James Tuzanat, Crystal, Minnesota.
Will you pull Daniel Claflin's from consent, please?
Sure.
To approve the renewal and issuance of a six-month Class B beer license to the Hudson Softball Association, LLC for the period June 1, 2010 to June 30th, June 31, 2010 in the concession building at Grandview Park, 1100 Carmichael Road, to approve the 2010 Grandview Park concession agreement with the Hudson Softball Association as presented. To approve the Stipes Show Carnival to be held May 6 to May 9, 2010 in Plaza 94, contingent on the approval of the property owner and coordination with the Garden Center. To approve the Willow River Super Fun Walk and Run Event to be held May, Saturday, May 1, 2010, beginning and ending at the Fifth and Oak Street Playground. To place on file the reports of the building inspector and fire chief, the St. Correia EMS Commission minutes of April 8, 2010, and the Public Utility Commission minutes of April 13, 2010. That is all.
Okay.
Move to approve.
So motion to approve the consent agenda, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call vote.
Morissette?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Brokaw?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Alright, those items are approved. So we'll move on down our agenda to the finance committee. So number two, we polled and we're gonna take up tomorrow night. On the operators, we've got the one for Daniel Claflin, that one we need to take up. Staff recommendation is for approval.
I'll recuse myself.
Mr. Morissette is recused. There's a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. And that license is approved. We've got the application, number five, application of Tim Ladolce Vita, LLC for Class C Wine License, doing business as Toscano at 522 Second Street. The finance committee recommended approval with the contingency that successful completion of the building and fire inspections, the applicant understands that the business has to be at least 50% revenue from restaurant and I think that was it.
Move to approve with contingency.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the application. Any discussion? Questions? Applicants here. If you have questions, the idea is to do lunches noon, noon hour and through the day, primarily the wine bar, be more in the evenings, I think, in a nutshell. Is that about it? Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. And the application is approved. Congratulations. Look forward to visiting. Number six, well, wait a minute now. I promised, we didn't get to some of our items and our group down on number 13 waited and we kind of interrupted at the finance committee and ultimately I said maybe we should just take it up at the full council. So I think they're all here. Denny, why don't you give a, why don't you give a repeat of, is Denny here right now? Oh, there you are. Why don't we start over with you giving us some background? I'll tell you what my recommendation here is that I think we should, I think we should refund back the proportionate amount, the difference between the original proposal and what the new proposal is, which would be what, 17,000 or something like that?
19,000.
19,000. That's what I think would be the fairest. Denny, why don't you give them the background on this?
General, the project for the 93-unit hotel for Comfort Suites at 2620 Center Drive did not receive full bank funding and had to stop construction on the project. The developers would like to resurrect the project, would like to get it going again. They would like to take the top, essentially take the top floor off of the building, reduce the number of units from 93 to 66, which is a reduction in 27 units. My discussions with city staff, you know, if the plans are okayed, we have absolutely no concern about refunding that balance. That's fair and equitable to the developer. When I talked with the bank or their lending institution, which is Security Financial out of Duran today, they said their written agreement to move the project ahead would require that $35,000 of the sewer connection fee would be required for the bank to cooperate to move the project. I commented, is there any leeway in that? Is there some way the city can get an agreement not to release all or part of that fund? They said, no, they really, really need the cash injection. My final comment to Mr. Carlson, lending, he, and he's, he did comment to me that he's very impressed with the development team that's now being put together for the redevelopment of the project. Mr. Carlson commented that he's got several years' experience in hotel financing, so he's not new to this particular type of financing, what requires to move a project ahead. But he said, their current situation, they would need 35,000 from that sewer fund to make the project move ahead. That's the bottom line from the bank. And my last comment was, would they be open to myself and/or Kathy McKittrick visiting with them further as far as any type of agreements that might be worked out between the city? And he said absolutely yes, they'd be open to discussing, but really, he was, said that the 35,000 was the amount that the bank needed out of this fund to make it, make this project work.
Well, Denny, how can it work? I mean, if, if, so they won't have a building permit then, right?
Correct. I mean, essentially...
It's not really working, nothing's gonna happen.
We're gonna have to spend the building permit till the, you know, it's, the project reapproved and the, the connection fees repaid. I, you know, I, I just, the call wasn't made to me till 2:30, 3 o'clock this afternoon, so I didn't have a lot of time to get into it with more specifics. I don't know if we, if hotels of Hudson needs a decision tonight. Aaron and I talked about that and maybe by postponing the consideration, we can, give us more time to try to work out something with the bank, but they're gonna have to comment to that issue.
Well, some background, I mean, we've had a lot of development and done a lot of projects and Denny, you've been with the city for around 30 years. And in that entire time, I don't know that we've really done this before.
Never.
Never. So the idea is usually, I mean, you're gonna get a building permit, you come and pay these fees and you start construction. That happened here, just like usual. But now we're in an unusual economic climate and essentially, this isn't the only project that, you know, had financing and then didn't have financing or didn't have the wherewithal to go forward and so it came to a stop. And the question is then, and the first question was, hey, what if we had a different project? Would you prorate? My response to that was, I know this, if you were approved for 100 units and you'd paid the fee for that and you came in instead and said you wanted 150, I know we'd be charging you additional fees. The inverse or, you know, the opposite of that, I don't know that it necessarily is the case, but there's some logic and it seems like it's fair to say that, look, if you were approved for three stories and now you're building two, there's less sewer and water impact, making an adjustment is one thing. I worry about us setting a precedent with refunding because you, you know, you, you go forward to a certain point and now you can't go forward anymore, okay, then you can get those fees back.
But haven't, have we never had a situation where somebody bought the building permit and then the whole project was canceled? Do we keep that money or do we refund it?
Well, typically, we'd keep the money, but the thing is, is that if another development had come in and the sewer connection fees had been paid, we would either refund the sewer connection fees upon getting payment from the new development. We can't double dip.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's, that's just logical, but, and that's, this is the first request, so this is something that's totally new from a, from a consideration. We have never had this considered.
So I, I think, in a nutshell, I mean, I, my recommendation is that I think we should refund the prorata portion. I think there's some equity to that. It might be unusual, but we're in unusual times.
I'd like to move instead, sir, for main.
Yes.
Like to move, so we can conclude this, like to move to postpone this matter, so this banker and who's involved can get reeducated and, Dan, you can move forward.
Right, there's a motion to postpone?
Second.
And a second.
I want the, I want the project to remain alive and I don't wanna kill it tonight and because some banker doesn't understand economics.
Well, it's a debatable motion, so I guess we're in debate and Randy, sat here...
Yeah, I'd like to kinda hear if that, if it can work out with the Hudson Hotels, if that's something that needs to get approved tonight or can be postponed, which sounds like the benefit of all.
Alright, Mr. Aaron Sandine from Hudson Hotels, LLC.
Okay. We're in uncharted territory here, I realize. I came and talked to Dean a couple months ago, I think now, with the initial thought of, our, our plan was to change from the 93 unit to the 66 unit and kinda going back to when we got approved, it was green light from the bank, moved forward, again, the perfect storm hit, we hit October of '08 and things all changed. So we've been since that time kinda changing our, our objectives, not, not as far as the hotel itself, but, but we've been looking at, do we, you know, try to raise more capital? Do we look at private funding sources? And I've talked to no less than 40 banks across the US in the last 12 months and hospitality's just kinda choked off. What's happened that we've seen in the last, I'd say, three to six months is there's some glimmer of hope. And, and in talking with a lot of these lending institutions, they are really saying that you need to kinda hit that sweet spot of, of, you know, maybe a smaller sized hotel in this type of a budget range. So that's when we came up with the plan, that we're gonna try to shrink this hotel and the numbers worked. And when I approached Dean, you know, again, we were both kinda talking about the fact that this is uncharted and, and when I had sent Denny the letter, I thought, well, maybe the easiest thing for us to do is just to ask for the whole sewer and water connection fee back so we can kinda start this thing back from scratch. So we started to get some new floor plans, some, some new renderings and some other things and then we also have a new feasibility and appraisal and those all look good. I would say, compared to where we were at three to six months ago, the project is about 80 to 90% positive that it's gonna happen. And, and I couldn't tell you that three to six months ago. I would've said 50/50 or maybe less. So these are all positives. What, what Denny had said from the bank is, is we went to them and they, we have a note on the land with them, we went to them and asked if they would extend us out for a longer period of time. You know, again, we've been very optimistic something might happen soon, but it, it hasn't. So we really wanna try to get something through the end of this calendar year with the bank and make sure that they're happy. Our agreement with them was that we would bring in X amount of money and we needed to come in with 35,000 more. You know, in a perfect world, getting 35,000 back on this fee would be great because then that's okay, we can use our other resources to continue, continue the project going. If indeed you came back and said, we're gonna recommend doing just the, the prorata change in the 19-5 or whatever it is, we'll make it work still. I mean, we're committed to the project, we're committed to doing this as a hotel, 66 unit. But it'll, you know, I'd be lying to you if I said it wasn't contingent upon financing because we need to now, instead of like we did before, we need to put the horse in front of the cart. And before, we kinda got ahead of ourselves thinking that the financing wasn't placed and like Dean said, it's just kinda, everybody was caught off guard, so.
So you're okay with the postponement?
Absolutely. I, I mean, let's do it right and I wanna make sure, you know, you're giving us a consideration here of something you haven't done before and it's a situation where it helps us out getting anything back, so.
Alright, any other questions for Aaron?
No, I'd make one comment. I would say that, you know, if they come in with a 66 unit, we'd be charging the other amount, so.
Yeah, they can't, I mean, in my opinion, the prorata refund is right, it makes sense, we don't have a past practice, but they would have to pay that anyway.
Right.
To have, I mean, pay the amount for the number of units they're building in order to have a viable building.
That, you know, that, that issue was made perfectly clear to the bankers.
Yeah, so it's a matter of them coming up with the rest of the money from somewhere else.
Aaron, can you do that? If we were not to postpone tonight, if we were to give the $19,000 rebate?
As far as coming up with the money with the, with the bank?
Yes.
Yes.
You can do it. So we're not putting you in jeopardy if we go...
It's, it's not, it's not available at this time, but we have a group that's committed to the project, that's committed to, to see this through and the bank is willing to work on this with us. They don't, I mean, if you think about it, if they get this back, they've got an improved lot that's probably worth 50 cents on the dollar and that's probably being generous. Everybody wins if this project happens and this gets built, so. But I, I mean, I'll be honest with you, when I sent the letter and made the request, I kinda shot for the moon. And again, after our conversation, Dean, it was a little bit different, but I figured that this is happening pretty fast. I was thinking we probably would have some more discussions on it and, you know, I mean, as far as a vote tonight, that's obviously up to you, if you guys, if that's what you're comfortable with, but if it's something that, if we can have some future conversations with, if you think it's warranted with our banker, maybe he has a different perspective, but...
So you would say you would come down on the side of the postponement?
Pardon me?
You were saying now you would come down on the side of the postponement to allow you more time to talk to your banker. Which would you prefer? I'm trying to get a feeling.
Right. I, I would say that it's probably in our best interest to talk to the banker before something gets approved through the city.
Thank you.
I really, my comment is, I don't think we, we should be negotiating with the bank.
I don't either.
It's not, it's not up to us, that's between...
Yeah.
Mr. Sandine and his group of investors.
And I just wanna give him the time to do that, that's all.
Yep, absolutely.
Well, I, I'll just tell you, I would be opposed to refunding anything more than that prorata because I think it's a bad precedent.
Nobody's talking about it.
Agreed.
So if then the question becomes, either we do that or we refund nothing, what's to talk about with the banker?
True.
Well, Aaron just said that he would like more time to talk to his banker. That's why I'm going for the postponement.
But the reality is, I don't think anyone here is going to approve anything other than the prorata.
Well, I agree. I agree.
Let's go back...
I'll, I'll make this comment. You had asked before if, if the project would keep going and it will and ideally, you know what you're comfortable with and I understand and I appreciate that because it's fair, it's more than fair. If, in the end, that's what the, the result's gonna be, then we move forward and I realize that's changing what I just said, but we, we, we'll work it out with the bank. I mean, that's our job, it's not the city's job to do that.
Well, then I'll rescind my motion if it's okay with the secondary because you don't need this consideration, okay?
Alright, so who was the secondary? Was it Lee?
Didn't it Al?
It was Al.
Al, secondary.
You okay with that?
Yes.
Laura's open for a motion.
I'll move that we rescind or that we rescind, that we return the $19,575, which is the prorated by the number of rooms.
Second.
There's a second by Lori. Discussion?
Do we need to have a new project approved?
Mm-hmm.
As far as the 66 unit?
For any further work happens there. Other than erosion control and just maintaining the site is gonna need to happen as we get into summer now, we have big rains, I'm a little worried about erosion and so on.
Aaron had said in his letter to us or to Denny that within 60 days, he would be coming back with a new plan.
Alright.
Alright.
Because it has, the new plan is reapproved.
Yeah.
Discussion?
Just, just to go back one more time, we'll, we have no project approved at this time then. Is that correct?
That's true because you, you don't technically have a building permit anymore now, you've essentially made a payment towards the fees that would be required for a building permit, but we need to see some more specific plans on the 66-unit hotel development before the building permit can be amended or reissued or whatever the process is gonna be.
Well, it's good for two years, the building permit, so it was issued in December of 2008 and be good through the end of the year. I would think that they could file amended plans?
That's what we were thinking, was it would be amended plans.
Even, is that true?
That would make sense, yeah.
There are issues on the site, on the parking and retaining laws of the existing building itself.
The, the original permit was for the, for the four-story building. They're coming back with a different project. I'd feel more comfortable if, if the council had a, had a second look at the new project.
Okay, does that answer everyone's questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Alright, so we'll refund the prorated 19,575. Alright, with that, we'll go back to our regular agenda we had done. Let's see, where had we? We were at, we did, did number five and we're on number six. Number six is review of applications submitted for reserve Class B liquor and Class B beer license. We have two. One is from Shanghai House, LLC, doing business as Shanghai Bistro, 2420 Gateway Court. The other is from Aqua Pearl, LLC, doing business as Aqua Pearl at 109 Second Street. We have one liquor license that we made available through an ordinance change recently. We received the Shanghai Bistro application shortly after that. We held that application, I didn't schedule it for a hearing, for a time to wait and allow others to consider the option. We now have a second, this is the Aqua Pearl. Your options here are to approve one license or no license, but not to approve both. The finance committee recommended approval of a license for Shanghai Hudson, LLC, doing business as Shanghai Bistro. Representatives from both are, are here, so if you'd like to hear from them, we can do that. What's your pleasure?
I'd like to move the committee's recommendation for Shanghai Bistro.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the application from Shanghai Bistro. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That application is approved. At this point then, we have no other liquor license applications available to consider giving to Aqua Pearl. However, we now have a beer license available, whence it's turned in by, when Shanghai has to pay their $10,000 reserve license fee and take care of some paperwork and at that point, we'll have one beer license available, we'll have no wine licenses and we'll have no liquor licenses.
We will have, we will have a wine.
Okay, and then we'll have one wine too. Alright... Okay. And then we'll have one wine too. All right. Uh, thank you. And we'll move down to number nine, the lease agreement for concessions at Lake Front Park. Park Board recommends approval. Finance Committee recommended approval for Chicago Dogs. Little different approach. I think it looks like a good deal.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion?
Glad to see it's Vienna beef. It is a Chicago dog and it's a Vienna beef.
Did you want to hear anything about it?
Sure, for the.
All right. You want to give us a, who's here?
Me.
All right. Yep. Go on up and why don't you tell a little bit, this'll be your chance to get people just hungry for hot dogs.
Bruce, and Bruce, clarify your, uh, push cart, because I think there's a misnomer about how you can use that throughout the park.
Oh, okay. Um, we've been in business for twelve years, starting at the Minnesota State Fair. Uh, we use Vienna products exclusively when available. Uh, Vienna makes a hot dog which, to some, is probably the best quality hot dog made in the country. Uh, we specialize in what we call a Chicago-style hot dog, which has brown mustard, onions, relish, tomatoes, cucumbers, soy peppers, dill pickle, and celery salt on a poppy seed bun on the hot dog. And if you haven't experienced one, you haven't experienced life. Um, we have an operation, we have a shop in Stillwater, which has a walk-up window and a couple of tables in the lobby of a, of a building. It's right on Main Street on the north end of town. We also have a concession trailer, which is a mobile trailer, that we do art shows, county fairs. We do catering out of there. Wherever they'll let us put it, we'll put it. And now we hope and are looking forward to, uh, having the same or a similar operation in Lakefront Park. Um, in using the park, we, as Randy was talking about, a mobile cart. I have available to me a mobile hot dog cart, which would be able to be put in another area of the park or by the band shell, which we could serve hot dogs out of. We'll also have a popcorn cart that we could put out there at certain times. Uh, these are items that would not be used on a regular basis, but pretty much for special occasions or at special events and things like that.
And it has to be where a power is.
It has to be where power is. It needs to be plugged in. And, uh, if needed, we could use a generator, but I would prefer not to use a generator just because of the noise level that is produced by a generator and the guests' comfort. Um, out of the concession stand, we're going to serve our continuous style of hot dogs. We will probably do Polish sausage and bratwurst. We will do a pizza of some type. We'll do ice cream novelties, candy, different snack-type event, items. Um, and pretty much mix up a variety of, of food.
We gotta cut you off or I'll.
Yeah, really.
That's the idea, see?
You're, you're talking to some council members who haven't been.
What we're hoping, what we're, what we're sort of gauging at is not only to be able to attract the people that are in the park, uh, but also to get some of the people that are working in the town and residents of the town to come down as an alternative place to eat. And, you know, like, somebody compared, uh, our shop in Stillwater to Manny's. And the only difference between the two is we give change.
All right. That sounds good. Thanks a lot. All right. Ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. All right. And that lease agreement is approved. Number ten, the estimated material costs for refurbishing the Grandview Park dugout. Finance Committee recommended approval. We talked about where the labor would come from and we have the workforce, um, the young, young, uh, workers again available this year. And so, I think that'd be a large part of the labor. And then the money to come from the concessions account. So.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Post say no. And we'll approve the dugout improvements. Number eleven is to review the costs for purchasing and installing security lights at Grandview Park parking lot. Finance Committee recommended approval with the money to come from the budgeted ten thousand dollars, um, that we had approved in this twenty-ten budget for this purpose. The estimates here are coming in at fifty-seven hundred sixty-nine dollars, considerably less than what was budgeted. And we also had discussion about, we'd like to adjust that, um, item down so that there's nothing left in that budgeted amount. Um, any questions on this one? So, these'll be high-efficiency, um, low, uh, what are they called? Induction lights.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second.
As I brought up in, uh, in finance, we certainly have to go back and look at operational costs too and make sure we're charging enough to cover the additional electrical next summer because we're spending more money from the operational side.
Yes. Any other? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Motion passed. That was number eleven. Number twelve is also at Grandview Park and is upgrades to the irrigation system. We had a split vote on this at the committee, two to one. But the recommendation was to accept advance irrigation's bid of forty-three hundred dollars for irrigation improvement. Money instead of what's on your issue sheet, the Finance Committee recommended at the suggestion of Betty, that we should instead fund this through the five thousand dollars that was allocated within our long-term capital improvement budget in a line that was titled Grandview Park Infield Improvements. It was five thousand dollars. This one's forty-three hundred. And we felt that's the best use of it and that would be the end of the infield improvements for this year. Um, so with that, any discussion or a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve.
So, I just have a question. The, there's two of the fields that are irrigated now. So, we're extending it to the other two. And then on all four fields, are we extending it to the infield? Is that what it is?
It, it's the infield for the dirt compact and that dirt, what wasn't mentioned in finance, will have to replace it slowly blows away and it doesn't get used properly with sulking. And it's gotta get soaked.
These are gonna, for each field, it'll be two different sprinkler, two sprinkler heads. One will be placed behind the pitchers mound. The other one will be, be placed behind the catcher's batter's box. And then it'll cover the whole infield then. Currently, there's no water being put on there unless we do it by hand.
All right. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post.
No.
Motion passes five to one. Number thirteen, request for refund. Uh, we did that one. Number fifteen, police department request. Now, we're into some where we did not get to these items fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. We did not get to during Finance Committee. So, Marty, uh, you're here to talk about this. We did have an update on the project and the expenses. And we're aware that you have a budget that we allocated for furniture. And that's where this would come from.
This would come out of that furniture budget. Correct.
All right. Anyone have questions for Marty on this item?
Is this the best you can do with three thousand dollars?
Well, this rotary system will work very well for us in providing the security level that we need inside this building. It's from the same manufacturer that's making the, our pre-evidence lockers. High-grade material. It's very good.
Did we get other bids or?
I did get one more bid. I got one from Echo Company. They came in at twenty-three seventy-five. But that did not include installation and delivery, nor, um, did it have the electronic key lock in it that we wanted.
Move for approval of the budget of twenty-seven eighty-five.
A second.
So, we got a motion and an approval, uh, pardon me, an approval. Don't try to talk to two people at once. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
So, do we really need to bring these items into, for approval if it's within the budget?
Because it's capital line and you haven't officially approved the capital budget yet.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Once you approve the capital budget, if it's under.
Our capital budget's been postponed a bit this year. I mean, it's not terribly unusual. Two years ago, we didn't do it until after the new council's in and that's what's happening again this year. Um, but that's why, otherwise, it would, you know, small items that were previously approved are not gonna come before us, but this one is.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no. Move on to number sixteen. Number sixteen is review and approve the plans and specs and authorize advertising for bids for Second and Vine Street intersection project. Our city engineer, Chuck Schwartz, is here. Um, Chuck, your recommendation is that we approve the plans and authorize the advertisement of bids for this project.
That is correct.
Which alternate do you recommend?
Well, essentially, the, per the direction of the council, we've put together a bid package that includes a base bid and then alternate A and alternate B. Okay? Uh, the base bid is what I guess you could consider more or less the bare bones project. It is, uh, essentially the pedestrian ramps, the curb and gutter, and then the concrete intersection, uh, within the project area there. As part of the work, uh, we are upsizing the storm sewer, adding catch basins uh, per the, the downtown drainage study that the analysis has been done, but the report, um, hasn't been presented yet to Public Works. That'll happen in May. Okay?
Is this where the, um, are we gonna add drainage down Vine Street or is it gonna be over at Locust?
No, that, that is correct. We're taking, uh, part of the watershed and diverting it off of Locust onto Vine eventually as that, as, you know, Vine is reconstructed.
Okay. So, as, as we open this, we're adding, adding what we need underground?
That is correct. So, it's a, it's a thirty-six inch trunk through the inner intersection. And that's included in the base bid. Uh, also, alternate A, uh, expands upon the base project to include, uh, further work on the, uh, around the ped ramps. And so, in the future, when you do work, um, say on Vine to the west, you know, you're totally out of that intersection. And you're not abutting up against the thing. It's also includes primarily, the most important things is a throat widening for the east leg of Vine. So, that's when you're traveling west on Vine and wanting to go north on Second. Uh, we've, we've increased.
You're putting a slip lane in there?
Yes, exactly. And that's, that transition is gonna start, um, right after the existing driveway into the, into the dentistry building. And then the thought is in the future, when Vine Street is reconstruction, reconstructed, that, that turn lane would be extended all the way up to the alley.
Does A include flattening the slope on Vine Street?
Yes, it does. It does.
It's not A and B, so we don't need to do B unless we're looking long-term?
Yes, that is correct. That, that, what you're referring to is, um, is you're coming east up the hill.
Wow.
And that, we lowered that as, as, as much as practical and that was a foot, roughly a foot. That's, that's coming down. Uh, and then essentially, alternate B is, uh, further reconstruction on Second to the north of the interchange, another seventy-five feet, which, you know, if the money was there, would be real ideal. I don't think it's more or less practical, but again, right now, we have estimates that I've included in my issue sheet and we can go over those. Uh, but, uh, the thought was if you authorize, um, going out for bids, uh, we would open bids May twenty-seventh and then you would, for your consideration, in June.
What, um, you know, as we're working on the, the building down there too, has there been any discussions in Public Works about the sidewalk on the north side going down to the new library? Because I thought that would be included in this project since you got the cement out there and you got the road torn open. You just keep doing down the hill.
We have not talked about that, about the works.
Well, while we haven't talked about it, it's been my assumption that we would do that this summer as part of our sidewalk. And we usually do a bid. We get contractors who do sidewalks. They do it very, very competitively because that's what they do.
I was just thinking, because you've got, you've got a lot of construction going on right there where the sidewalk is gonna be, begin down the hill. So, you're gonna dig it up and fill it back in and then dig it up again to, or at least a piece of it.
That is on the agenda for the, Nick, a week from tomorrow for the Public Works meeting.
Here's my concern and it came up many times before, Chuck. I don't like your timeframe and I want to push this back towards the fall. We're in the peak season of, uh, most of our traffic downtown and I don't, we're, not to say rushing this, but I don't think we're doing any service to any businesses downtown if we're gonna throw this project and this detour up during the peak season. Is there any good time for it? Probably not.
Remember what happened to us once, last year, once we got into September and rains delayed everything up on Eleventh Street. It made everybody really unhappy and drove, drew the project out.
Well, believe me, I'm unhappy about Cooley Road yet, but that's a different subject tonight.
But it's just that if we run it further into fall, we're more likely to hit rain that'll delay the whole project.
I'm not saying wait until October, you know?
No, if we, if we start it right after Booster Days, it'll end at just about back-to-school time.
Well, the decision tonight is whether to go out to bid.
You gotta put a timeframe in there, don't you?
Well, there is a timeframe in what we've got, but, I mean, could we not accept the bids and still make a, a timing decision or a delay decision?
Well, I, I, I think you'd want to get that as part of the bid package. But, um, if, if they wanted further discussion, say at Public Works or at your next council meeting, you know, that's a civil change through addendum. But I would like it as part of the bid package so they know what timeframe they're working with and, and what, you know, that sort of thing. So, I mean, it's certainly something that can, can be further discussed.
There's, there's gonna be no good time or easy time to shut off traffic.
But right after the Fourth of July, I just question that. And I, and for the amount of money we're spending, I, I'd like to see more details. I mean, we spent what, almost nine hundred on Carmichael? Or spending almost a quarter, over a quarter of that with the small intersection project?
What we could, what we could ask for in one of the alternatives is to ask them to crash the schedule. And what, what would that cost? If they work nights and weekends, could they shorten this up to be a, it would cost us more money. But to your concern, they'd be in and out of there faster. I mean, is there any value in that?
Night construction, that kind of thing. We talked about that up at Carmichael and Crespe.
Yeah. And, you know, I know there is, um, is there senior housing at the corner there? And how that, you know, would play into crashing that schedule. I don't know if that's, how big of a concern that would be. Um, but I did include, you know, I did not include the entire twenty-seven-page plan set in your packet. I did include, uh, select plan sheets and I don't know, I, I was hoping that they would, uh, we'd be able to get them up.
Down here.
So, you know, we could put them on the screen.
Tell me in layman's terms and people out there listening, why does it cost so much for this intersection? When we spent nine hundred thousand dollars on almost how long? A mile or more?
Well, you, you, you know, you have the quite extensive detour route. What we're doing is a, you know, basically a separating the traffic at Buckeye Street heading north. Um, so the people wanting to do business or get downtown would go straight. But the people trying to just, uh, drive through the community would follow the bypass. Uh, it's a, it's a concrete intersection. This intersection is nine and a half inches of structural concrete and, uh, six inches of, of, uh, gravel and then another two feet of sand. Um, it's a very difficult little project. You know, there's no good staging areas. You know, they're gonna have to, in the evening, take their equipment off-site. Um, it is very expensive. I, you know, I'm cautiously optimistic that, you know, that, that they will come in underneath my estimates, but, you know, not substantially or what you would probably hope for. Um, it's, uh, in the alternate A, for instance, uh, there is also some line items in there to, to, uh, relocate the, uh, the lights. And, you know, that's, that's another thirty thousand dollars to do some of that work. So, so, yes, it's just, it's a very costly intersection.
We have, we have a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars budget.
Mm-hmm.
And when we bought the plow truck, which was budgeted for two-thirty and we got it for one-ninety. So, there's another forty thousand. And at that time, we knew. And at that time, we knew, because Chuck had already amended his estimate here, we knew that this one was not likely to be done for the one-fifty-two, right?
No, I think we had that number as early as last, I think it was one-forty-two is what we had, plus we had sixteen thousand grant.
We still have some grant.
Yeah, there's sixteen thousand, that's correct.
And we have, you, you, on your issue sheet, you've got some water main work, and that's coming from the water utility.
That is correct, yes.
So if we did alternate, I mean, it really comes down to, you're here tonight to talk about, do you want to bid this?
No, if you want me to ask.
Let's, just take that to a vote.
I think that's where we're at.
We approve the plans and authorize all three options, I'll forbid, base, A and B.
There's a second.
And I'll, I'll remove my idea of crashing the schedule, because I forgot about the, the residential.
Motion and second to get bids on the project.
So we can get bids, and obviously, we'll decide from there, but, you know, one option we haven't talked about is waiting and having this done next spring. Having it be our first project next spring before summer tourism hits, before school is out.
The other question-
Or shortly after school is out, sorry.
Right, I'm sorry.
It was just, I mean, it is an option, there's nothing that says we have to do it this summer.
How about an option of trying to fix it short-term without digging it all up and shutting the intersection down? Have we thought about that?
Well, we, I mean, we killed the uretec foam, let's lift it, and the mud jacking idea, which was on the agenda two years ago when I got here. Was, that was one of the very first things we talked about, was should we do that? Or should we just postpone and fix this intersection right at some point? Everyone knows it's difficult, you hate this, I think that was, how much was that? Do you remember the-
Twenty-five grand.
Twenty-five thousand to put the foam in and lift it up and so on, but there's a lot of other problems with this. It's got water infiltrating, it's, it's beginning to make the base break down, I think, in layman's terms, is that about it?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it is, the, the concrete joints are failing, and then the subgrade too, is failing as well.
So, I mean, we can patch it up and delay it.
What would be the impact if you delay it? How much damage would occur if it waited till next spring?
Well, again, that's, I tried to articulate the need for the project in, in my issue sheet, and I can highlight some of those issues. Talking, you know, from citizens and then also your emergency services as well. Cost is on one side, but, you know, those other factors are for it, are articulated in there. Namely, there is some concerns about just the rough ride going through there. The fire department expressed the jarring of equipment, and, you know, it's hard for me to personally speak on, you know, is, you know, six months the end of the world, or a year, the end of the world? Probably not, you've lived with it this long. But, you know, to invest thirty-five, forty thousand dollars into some, you know, patching, you might be back a couple of years from now, kind of in the same predicament. And so this is trying to bring forward a, more or less, you know, resolve the issue. And, and you've invested in these plans and specs this far, and, you know, to get real prices, it's, it's a simple matter of just putting it out for bids and seeing, seeing where it comes back, and then making a decision, that's, that's an option as well.
I have one, one question, I was just, if we start in July and we're done by September, about three months, how early can you start in the spring? Because if we start in May, you won't be done until after the Fourth of July, if I'm just penciling your dates in here.
Yeah, we have a, we have about seven weeks' worth of construction, so if, help me out with the math here, if we started in May, you know, you could get it done before booster days.
Is that the earliest you can start?
No, not necessarily, you could start, generally, you start seeing construction activity first part of April.
I'm not opposed to going out for bid, but I just would like us to have further discussion. And I'm wondering if, once the library and police are down on First Street, if we might not learn something about that intersection that we would take into consideration if we were to do it next spring. But I say let's go out for bid.
All right, other discussion, Randy?
No, as long as we get this to come back and talk, and I'll, let's find, bring it out to a bid, but-
Bid's only be good typically thirty to sixty days.
Sixty days.
Yep, no, I understand, I understand, we'd have to go back to-
I certainly think we need to slow it down.
Well, contractors may not be so hungry next year as they are this year.
It'll be more expensive.
It will cost us more next year, that's a pretty safe bet.
All right, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no. All right, motion's approved, that's number sixteen. Number seventeen was an update on police department remodeling project and moving schedule from Betty. She went through that at the finance committee. There is a spreadsheet that was on your table tonight. There've been a few changes, we had a couple of change orders, there were some pipes that were discovered that required moving and some other things. Bottom line is that we are on budget, maybe still a little under budget, and understanding that we took twenty-five thousand from the original budget and reallocated that to be available for EMS remodeling. Let's have an update on the schedule, Marty, you want to talk about what your plans are for schedule?
Well, as of right now, the building's about ninety percent, ninety-five percent completed. Carpet's in, they finished the tile in the lobby today, we're still waiting on the windows and the security glass to come in, but I've been told that should be in sometime this week. Carpet's down, as I said, the electricians have gone through already, access card system is now being put in, that should be done in the next couple of days. I talked to Mike, our IT guy, he said that server should be in, and wiring should be done by the end of this week. So we should be able to get our computers over there. My plan is, the phone system is gonna be shut off or transferred over to the new building sometime Friday afternoon. So I'm gonna shut the police department down downstairs at one o'clock on Friday, and probably not open it up again into the new building until Tuesday morning. That'll give me plenty of time to get moving on getting our supplies over to the new building. My plan is to move part of it on Friday, and then I'm gonna use Saturday and Sunday as well to help move some of that equipment over to the new building. And then on Monday, whatever bigger items are left, I should get some help from Public Works to be able to get those over there, get it set up, and get our computers up and running, and we should be business as usual at our new location.
Okay, questions?
Signage, did you get the numbers from the library?
Still have not gotten the numbers, no, I do not.
We just approved those last week.
I, I asked Cindy McClery about that, and she said that Jim was working on that with the contractor, but I have yet to see anything.
Okay.
For the public, where, if they need to come on Friday afternoon or Monday, are you gonna have a place for them to go?
Well, if they need an officer, they can always call, if it's an emergency, obviously dial nine-one-one, or if they need to talk to an officer, they can dial a non-emergency number, which is three-eight-six-four-seven-zero-one, and then an officer will be dispatched to handle their call, either a phone call or come and see him in person. If they need a report, they're gonna have to wait until our, where our office opens up again on Tuesday. Obviously, our computer system will be down, our printers will be down, so we will not be able to do much of anything until that system comes back up.
So maybe a good idea to post that phone number downstairs?
I'm gonna post it. The four, the four-seven-seven-one is, is our local number, the four-seven-zero-one is the non-emergency number to dispatch. So that's the number we're asking people to call. So, I am gonna have it put in the paper, and then we're gonna have it put on the website as well.
And the four-seven-seven-one will be operational now, is that right?
It will be on operational, but our office will still be shut down, because we'll still be moving.
All right, any other questions? All right, thanks, Marty.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Park Board, consider approval of the two thousand ten deer management program with River Valley Deer Management. This item has been to the council, it is, we've got further action on it down under unfinished business. The order in which we discuss this is somewhat up to you, and we could probably take them both together if you'd like. That other item then is under seven B. Consider ordinance number five-dash-ten to allow bow hunting in the city within a deer control program. We've got Mr. Longfaya from River Valley Deer Management is here tonight to answer questions or to tell you about the program. I still like this program, and I recommend approval of it.
Mr. Mayor, I looked at that, I don't know if you've obviously read that, but I would strongly like to suggest I be put on that committee. I know I can't be part of the ordinance, but I would like to be on that committee.
Yeah, so what Randy's referring to there, who's got the contract with River Valley? Do I have it? Do we all have this tonight?
No.
No.
Only if you brought it with you again. Randy, in the original contract proposal, there is a provision for creation of a committee, a city committee to oversee the program. How did you do it up in North Hudson? You had a small committee to talk about, I can't remember what it's called now, but it's something like a deer management committee.
Correct, then, a formal committee was never actually formed, it was a recommendation that, that we made, it's not required. It, it's just something that gives a, a direct reporting. We reported to one of the board members as opposed to a, a committee, Mr. Jim Thomas up in North Hudson, and then worked with the welfare committee as well, but they didn't create a specific committee to, to interface with us. But it, it would seem appropriate to have direct contact with specified individuals.
Okay, and it, here I found it, it was on page two, point three, under full program, it reads, well, Catherine's got some written notes, and she's suggesting that this line should read, "If in its sole discretion, the common council chooses to combine, to continue beyond two thousand and ten, a deer management committee will be created on the City of Hudson Common Council to interface with residents, the DNR, and the River Valley Deer Management LLC." You know, I always thought it made some sense to have some kind of a subcommittee that would deal with this, that would have representatives there. And, so, the recommendation from the park board then, that Randy's referring to, is that they recommended that there be a committee formed with city staff and park board members to determine areas of parkland to be included, and Mr. Morissette requested to be on the committee, and that's the way the motion from the park board. Now, recall that when we brought this forward, approving the program is not dependent on any of it happening on parkland. Although it may be very appropriate that there are areas of parkland that there is a need, and it's a safe place, and the park board agrees with it, and so on. But we could do this on other city-owned land, or we could approve it for privately-owned land, or all of the above. And so, I'll turn it over to you, questions?
Yes, we're, we're talking about the creation of a committee for an ongoing program, where the original proposal was for a pilot program for this year only.
Yes.
So why talk about an ongoing program until we see whether or not we like the pilot program? Which would mean, let's, I'll make it a motion, let us approve the contract for this year on land that, to be designated by this council, and move forward.
All right, there's a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I just did have some changes to this contract, primarily the renewal, which I think Scott has addressed in terms of not making any commitment for a renewal.
Right.
And then provision of a liability insurance policy and certificate by the organization. And I think there was just some other language that didn't seem appropriate in the contract regarding hunters wishing to apply. That really applies most to the organization, not to the agreement of the city.
We're fine with all that.
You know, that's fine that you feel that way, Scott, but I want to be involved with it, because I do object to this, and so do most of my neighbors in District One. So if you need a liaison, up until tomorrow, I am on the park board and the public safety committee. So I'd still like input on where this takes place, on, on the city property.
But, correct me if I'm wrong, but that liaison role is not a directing role as to where the hunt takes place.
That's not my intent, but I would see to put input. Otherwise, I'll just object to the whole project.
I think that, as I said in my motion, the council should decide tonight what kind of lands it's going to be on. Public land, public and park land, public, park and private, what? And I think we can decide that, and you can certainly have your voice heard in that, as we all can, and then we can move forward, okay?
But once that decision's made, we're not gonna be-
There won't be any, there won't be any going back and forth.
Designating portions of the city, or, okay.
Pilot program, we're outlining the, the permutations of that program tonight, so that we can implement that program.
I just wanted to clarify.
All right. Lee, Alan, Alan? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no?
No.
Five to one, motion passes, that's on approval of the deer management program with River Valley Deer Management. As long as we're at it, then, we've had a first reading on ordinance five-dash-ten to allow bow hunting. Lee, were there some changes, Catherine, on this ordinance?
Uh, yes, and I think it's in front of you, it's just wording changes at the bottom of, changes to ninety-nine-dish-six, just adding or the feeding of deer with written approval by the common council, just so it reads properly, and the same change on the back page for changes to one eighty-one-dish-five. That was the intent of the ordinance, just to have it read properly.
All right. Questions on the changes? That you understand, the thing with the feeding is, the feeding of deer is not currently allowed within the city.
I, I had one question there, it just dawned on me, so we're saying that it's, and he said, and other wild, non-domesticated animals, does that mean you can't feed the birds?
No, it's already on there.
Oh, except, but, okay, I was, I was, all right, I'm sorry. I was just rereading it going, what?
Common household bird feeders and squirrel feeders are accepted.
There we go, yeah, those are accepted, all right, I was reading the other side of it.
So it says it shall not prohibit the feeding of deer.
All right, so-
With approval, right.
With written approval, so what happens under the usual DNR deer management plan and our hunting laws is that there is some limited amount of baiting that can be done. In this case, that might be much to our benefit, because we have safety as an utmost concern. So we want to have the deer where we want them at the time that this is going on, and, and so it's, it's a safety issue as much as anything.
Before we get too deep into this, I'd like to move to suspend the rules so that we may act on this ordinance.
I don't think we have to suspend, because we already had a first reading, but go ahead and make a motion to approve.
Well, those aren't-
Not material, okay, I'll move to approve ordinance dash, five-dash-one.
Second?
I believe we did, so we have a motion and a second to approve ordinance five-dash-ten. Now we've had some discussion, now more discussion.
I'd like to see the three parks in District One taken out of this.
The three, I mean, the three city parks.
Berkmoor's Park, Anderson Park, Webster Park.
What he's saying is it would be approved everywhere in the city, but that we'd begin to prohibit it in certain areas.
Except and designated by common council, just as Scott pointed out.
I want to make a point though to you, Scott, that those are not District, pardon me, Randy, that those are not District One parks, they're city parks.
Located in District One.
I got it, sorry.
Located in District One.
I understand. That was philosophical, not, not wordsmithing, I'm just saying that those parks don't belong to the citizens of District One.
Yep.
They belong to the whole city.
So you're not asking for an ordinance change on that, you're just asking that those parks not be designated by the council. I don't think it makes sense to include the specific designations in the ordinance.
Can you form that in the form of a motion?
Well, I move to disal- Well, I move to disallow the hunt in Berkmos Park, Anderson, and Webster Park.
All right, is there a second to the motion?
We already have a motion and a second before.
Well, it's, uh, an amendment, I mean, he's, he's offering an amendment.
And I'm just listening to the lawyer.
That was my question, is it an amendment to the ordinance? I'm presuming that the council on a, some sort of periodic basis will designate where these hunts are allowed, and so I don't think it's advisable to have it in the ordinance.
Right now, they're giving, we're giving carte blanche.
All right, well, actually, I asked for a second, what I need to do is ask the maker of the motion whether they agree with the amendment. Who's the maker, Scott?
Yeah.
And do you agree with the amendment?
No.
No, okay, then the amendment's not in order.
So you're giving carte blanche to this program?
No, I, the council's going to decide where those areas are going to be, so that we still have that safeguard.
At what point?
We're not giving up any protection here.
When are we doing that, after this ordinance is established, or what?
Sure, we're going to do it today.
Okay? The issue is the ordinance change, it's pretty simple, we don't allow bow hunting in the city. The ordinance says we will, under the terms of a controlled hunt contracted and so on, a part of a deer control program, it's pretty simple. Do you want to allow that? Are you ready to vote?
So, so this really should just say discharge, discharge of bows for the purpose of hunting? It just says discharge, just.
For any purpose.
What are you trying to off your wife?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm not going there.
Well, okay, are we ready to vote? Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no?
No.
All right, motion passes, the ordinance is adopted, vote is five to one.
Can I make one quick comment?
Yes.
Just want to reiterate that feeding of deer in the city is not allowed. I think some residents may still be unaware of that, but it can exacerbate the problem that we already have, so.
We have nothing else better to look at than feed deer, worry about that?
Well, they're a public nuisance, they're rats with poaches, and, uh.
All right, let's keep moving here. We got, uh, E one done, I guess we'd be up to E two. E two is White Camp Park Pavilion Design. Comes from the park board, you got plans in your packet. Park board recommends that we approve Elliott Architects' floor plan and structural design for White Camp Park Pavilion. And Public Works and Parks Director Zuli noted that the design and floor plan meet the criteria set by the park board, and that this design could be used for future restrooms at other parks. The money for this would come from the park impact fees that were collected during the construction of hundreds of homes up in that neighborhood. Tom, you want to tell them about it?
Well, we've got, uh, design plans, and, um, God from Elliott, uh, is here to show the renderings, if you'd like to see those. And this was presented to the park board last month's meeting, and they approved, uh, the design and, uh, the plans that we got presented to us.
What's the approximate cost on?
Uh, the budget that we worked with was to keep things, uh, three hundred thousand or less.
And the color of this stone is in keeping with the existing structures that the water utility has?
There was a question on the, the stone, whether we have natural stone, or you can get, um, cultured stone, but it would still be the same colors, just depending on we're going to get alternate bids, whether it's natural stone, like it's, that's on the water, um, plants, or cultured stone. But if, whatever one it is, it'll be the same color to match.
Thank you.
Move for approval.
All right, there's a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no, motion's approved. Seven A, consider rezoning parcels of property for consistency with land uses and zoning designations in the city. Comprehensive plan, ordinance three dash ten. We had a public hearing on these, we had some further discussion at the, uh, at the Plan Commission on these. Did a little changing, did anyone have an update?
Well, yeah, the conversation at the Plan Commission will actually be heard at, uh, the May third, Common Council, with some public hearing considerations. Really, the issue, at least from what I heard at the last Common Council meeting, when we had first reading on this, was, uh, the rezonings, uh, adjacent to the Central Business District. There's two half-block areas, a half-block immediately east of City Hall, which are three parcels being considered. The mortuary, uh, the residence just north of that, and the Osborne Residence, uh, just east of the old library, the law, present law office. On the next half-block north of Locust Street, there are three residential properties, two single-family homes, and a duplex. Again, what the, uh, Plan Commission's proposing is, is that, uh, one block area comprised of two half-block areas would eventually be a growth area for the Central Business District. One question that came up is, does the rezoning have to take place at this time? The answer is no. We would still be, uh, as long as, eventually, uh, you know, if a zoning application came in, asked for Central Business District, complies with the master plan, comprehensive plan, city should approve the zoning at that time. Of the three properties on the south side of Locust Street and east of Third Street on that half-block, all three properties have stated to me they're, uh, willing to have their property rezoned. I did have conversations, and, uh, Jody and, and Brian from, uh, Park and Young is here tonight. I also have a letter from the Os- Osborne family saying they're, uh, in support of other rezonings. And then, uh, did talk to the Millers extensively last week, they had several questions on use of the property and so forth. Uh, they expressed to me they were not opposed to it, and after I answered the questions, uh, they did not come back and, and expressed to me that they're opposed to it. On the other half-block to the north, uh, situation's a little different, nobody's really opposed to it, but really kind of have mixed feelings whether they want the property zoned or not. I'm okay if, you know, if you want to hold off on those three parcels, retain them as a single-family or two-family residential. Till they want to come in, I'm okay with that, I, I'm not opposed to that. Uh, but we do have support on the three properties immediately across, uh, the street from basically City Hall and, uh, the parking lot. And here, that they are supportive of the zoning considerations. All the other zoning considerations that's proposed, we've had, uh, no comment. But a lot of those are city properties, please, you know, vast majority of the parcels that are being proposed rezoning are taking properties either out of single-family or some other type of zoning and put them into a public, uh, zoning classification, which is consistent with the use of the property.
All right, so this is an ordinance, and, let's see, we have not had first reading on this.
Yes, it was first reading last.
Oh, yeah, we did, okay, thank you.
I'll move to adopt ordinance, what do we got here?
Three dash.
Three dash ten.
Second.
Motion and second to adopt ordinance three dash ten, any discussion?
With the recommendation of removing those three properties, correct?
Well, that's up to the motion maker, I mean, what you've got is what's before you.
You don't have that in your recommendation, they're not concerned about?
Well, I, I think after talking to them, um, one, uh, Mrs. Gurkey, uh, stated to me, Gurkey Properties, that they're not opposed to going to Central Business District, that's really their intention, to keep the property used as a two-family residence for some time. Uh, Mr. King, I visited with him, he had some concerns on property taxes, if it went to commercial. I, I, I think, uh, I think basically my recommendation would be with full, those rezonings on those three residential properties till later time, and let them come in and apply when they're ready to do so.
I'll.
You were talking about three ten and three thirteen Locust, six fourteen Third Street?
There are two of them on Third and one's on Locust, yeah, north of Locust Street.
I'll amend my motion to exclude those three properties.
So it'd be three thirteen Locust, six fourteen Third, seven twenty-four?
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
All right, so everyone understand the motion? Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no? And the ordinance is adopted. Update on projects, Chuck.
Do we have another ordinance? Or am I going outside?
We'll get there.
Hello again, uh, talked about Second and Vine, touched upon downtown local drainage study. Uh, let's jump right into Cooley Road. Again, talking with Monarch, it, it looks like mid to late May is when they're going to get in there. They did call and, uh, leave us a message today about an opening, April twenty-ninth or thirtieth, um, if they can get their milling machine, and they were going to ask and call Tom as regards to if they were able to get a milling machine, whether or not the city would allow them to move up the schedule. I would adv- advocate against that, and Tom's in concurrence, uh, just because of the ambient air temperature. Uh, we like to see it consistently, you know, sixty to seventy degrees above, and, you know, realistically, you know, it's still coming down, you know, the temperature in the evenings is in that forty-degree range. And so, you know, I don't see the harm in waiting a couple more weeks to make sure that we've, um, you'll get a better end product, and, uh, if you wait and get those warmer.
Why is it every project that we do, we have to wait and wait and wait with you?
Well, you could certainly, again, it's one of those things where you, you don't want to pave where this, we can make it happen, but I'm just advocating against it.
And I assume that the, the reasoning is the deterioration of the product in a shorter period of time?
You know, it, you know, it comes out of the, it comes out of the truck at three hundred degrees, and there's a, you know, you need to get that compacted before it cools.
Eleventh Street should be fixed by now.
Yes, well, we can. Well, we can certainly talk about that after we talk about Cooley, if please, is the council. But again, you know, the temperatures in the evenings, dropping way down, we'd like to see that warmer temperature. You know, ideally, you want, again, that sixty and seventy-degree day, um, and that, and the ground warmed up as well. Uh, you know, and it's, yeah, it has been getting to be sixty and seventy degrees, uh, but, again, that's not till mid-afternoon commonly, and, you know, they're going to want to pave from seven in the morning to, to seven at night or what have you. So I'm just.
Haven't the companies turned their machines on, aren't they making hot pitch right now?
Yes, they are.
So they must think that it's pretty good to still, to go start laying it.
Well, in, in general, like the base course, uh, you know, we will allow that to go down earlier. I think you have an opportunity here, that there's nothing really pressing, that, again, my recommendation is to wait for warmer weather.
Well, Randy, I, I would have to offer that it's not necessarily evidence that they think it's okay, it's evidence that they got somebody to buy the product now.
Right, look.
That's all.
These come, these need to be completed, I mean.
But we do, we don't want to have to spend another hundred grand.
You know, I understand that whole thing, you know? But these projects are not getting done in a timely fashion, everything that has been touched. They screwed up the manholes on Eleventh Street, that should be affixed by now, you know?
Well, in regards to this Cooley Road project, this is a public works-driven project. We were on board to help with some of the construction observation, um, the plans and specs, you know, we did put together the drawing for it, but this is a public works-driven project.
How long do you expect Cooley Road to take?
Cooley Road will take.
When you decide to start.
Uh, probably five, six days, you know, a couple days of milling, depending on the patching, a couple days of paving.
Okay, are we done with number three? Further questions on Cooley Road? I think what this comes down to is, yes, there are people that are paving right now, they're primarily people who have an urgent need for paving. And if you have a muddy lot that didn't get done in time last fall, which happens to sometimes, you know, they get caught, you're very, very anxious to get something down, for example. We aren't in that urgent a need, we might as well wait and get the best quality product. Let's talk about Eleventh Street, let's get those manhole adjustments done.
Yes.
When will they be done?
There'll be a meeting this week, uh, we've, we've talked to Zappa, we're going to go on site with, uh, Public Works, the wastewater who, who drove the adjustment projects, uh, their contractor, uh, the Eleventh Street contractor, and so that, that is being worked on.
We're anxious for those.
Yes.
Uh, anybody else have questions on Eleventh Street? How about the other two thousand and nine projects?
Uh, again, a letter was sent out to, uh, Scott Construction about the seal coating work. Uh, the latest, uh, correspondence with him is, he's indicated that he will be on site May seventh to reevaluate it, and he's still evaluating his paperwork, so, uh, May seventh is when he's going to do his warm weather review, so to speak.
Is that the issue up in, uh, Benhaman Farm?
Yeah.
We need to hold them accountable.
And it's, it's not only Benhaman Farms, but it's also the industrial park as well, that they seal coated.
Okay. Can I ask a question? Do you have any, have you have any thoughts on it, Chuck, as an inj- as our engineer, what happened in either of those projects?
Well, um, we're going to, I'm going to be in town tomorrow with my construction observation, and one of the things we're going to do is revisit it. We have two working theories right now, um, competing theories. One is that there's, there's a problem with the, uh, the oil materials problem. And the other competing theory is, uh, potentially dirty nozzles, and whether or not they were getting that even distribution across all of the lanes. And so tomorrow, what we're going to look at harder at is, is whether or not we're seeing kind of that stratification of, of what went down.
Thank you.
How many costs that are associated with that evaluation are built back to?
Well, it, uh, you know, some of it depends on the end result here, you know, whether or not, if the seal coating's fine, which we don't believe it is, um, and, again, we're going to reevaluate it, but, yeah, there are some costs being incurred with the letter gone out, and, you know, and some of these things. And so it, it depends on the interaction and, and, uh, how things proceed forward, so, you know, we'll, we'll certainly bring forward, uh, the information, but it, you know, it needs to be addressed, and, uh, you know, Tom, Tom needs our assistance as far as, um, reviewing that.
But regardless of what the issue was that caused the problem, the final product was not adequate.
That's our position, yeah.
I agree with Randy, they need to be held accountable.
Yep.
All right, private developments.
Uh, just, uh, the footings at the Tire Pros, that's up on, uh, Industrial there at the corner of Presley Drive, uh, they're pulling footings there. Uh, all the utilities and that Heritage Cottage is two up in Heritage Greens, uh, has been installed, and now we're just waiting a little bit of time. Thirty days to pass so we can finish the, the mandrel testing and, and, uh, and, uh, you know, and also the building footings are being poured up there. That's about it, oh, Goodwill Industries, too, um, utility work up there. Water service has been installed, and I believe the, on Friday, they did install the sanitary service as well, so, um, they're working on that.
Okay, any questions for Chuck? All right, thank you, Chuck.
Thank you.
New business, item A, consider amendments to the zoning code, section two five five dash four eight and two three five dash three six, to establish a payment in lieu of required off-street parking in the B three Central Business District. This is ordinance six dash ten.
Thank you, uh, this ordinance, uh, was created in part, uh, from discussions that had to do with, uh, the Mr. Andy Krone project at southwest corner of Second Street and Locust Street, where, uh, they proposed an expansion, uh, of the building. Uh, the amount of off-street parking that they were able to provide is less than what was required after we had taken the net area out. Uh, there's some concerns where they advance a project or not approve it because it couldn't meet all the required parking. So this is a proposal that would. So this is a proposal that would require a party to pay into a fund which would be segregated to allow the city to build additional municipal parking or work with a private developer to allow private parking to be public, made public. So it doesn't necessarily have to result in new construction. And I'm, I'm only recommending first reading of the ordinance tonight. There may, may be comments from the public. I know Shelley asked for a copy of ordinance, I don't know if other parties are here tonight to comment. But this is really set up to try to create a program that would generate funds. This would be segregated from the municipal parking fund and Kathy's gonna speak to that in a minute. There's a few minor amendments that Kathy's proposing. That's another reason we are only seeking first reading on this ordinance tonight. If there's any questions that the common council has, I'd be pleased to try to address those or if we cannot address them tonight, to address them in the future. In regards to my issue sheet, my recommendation, I visited Chuck on construction cost of a ten-car parking lot and a thirty-car parking lot to try to establish what the fees would be. I'm recommending that for parking lots of one to five stalls, the fee would be five thousand seven hundred dollars per stall. And for six or more stalls, five thousand four hundred and fifty dollars per stall. So if somebody has, can provide six stalls, but their requirement is ten, then to be approved, it'd be four times that five thousand seven hundred dollars unless, you know, there's a different fee that the common council wants to establish.
Can I ask, just a logic question?
Sure.
If I build a building somewhere where there is space, our, our logic here is that if I'm required to put in twenty-five or ten spaces or whatever the number is, that if I go to a contractor, it will cost me this amount to build that space. Is that, is that true? Like if I hired somebody to build me a parking lot, we're thinking that this is close to what it would cost me to build one?
Well, the construction cost as far as doing the base course, the pavement, curb and gutter, lighting, is not, you know, is included in that, but we've also inserted land cost. If you're, I mean, here's the possibility of the city having to go out and buy land as part of the construction of parking and we, you gotta add land cost into it also. And that, that, I added fifteen, eighteen dollars per square, or ten, twenty dollars per square foot into that so that, you know, you're just not reflecting the construction cost, but you're also reflecting what it's gonna cost for the city to invest in purchasing land, which is also an additional cost of.
Well, and I'm following you because if I build a building in another area of town, that I also have to purchase the land for the parking lot. What I'm looking at is whether, the logic is this isn't gonna dissuade building downtown because these same costs would be incurred by someone who is building something in another area. So I wanna make sure that's clear, that we understand, that we're not saying, okay, we don't want, that we're gonna add a cost here to build and there isn't a cost there. It really is a trade-off cost. You would have purchased the property, you would have built the parking lot, so.
Yeah, no, I, I would agree with your position.
Denny, I have a, I have a question, it's basically a philosophical one. I don't dispute your figures, I just, I brought with me two recent studies, one from Northwestern University and one from the city of Winnipeg actually. And they're talking about the same kind of costs, but I think philosophically, we may have a problem. We're talking about the B three business, the central business district. And we're talking about the cost of a parking space as though it were a surface space.
That's what these costs are based on, surface parking.
Right. And since we can't make more land, we're not gonna have additional surface downtown in the B three business district. And if we are really talking about getting the money to create parking spaces, we're probably talking about above-ground parking, some sort of ramp, two-story or one, or three-story or whatever. In which case, what I found on a Mankato originally, what I find from Northwestern, what I find from Winnipeg, all says the same thing, it's from twenty thousand to twenty-six thousand dollars per stall. Since we don't have more, I, I don't know where we would find more surface on which to put parking spaces in the B three central business district. If we're talking about creating additional parking, which is the reason for this ordinance, I believe we have to talk about above-ground parking.
Well, I'm, I'm willing to discuss that, but, I mean, to assume that you're gonna assert the cost for structural parking, I know it might be a fairly big leap also, Scott.
Well, it's gonna be expensive.
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand where you're coming from.
Let me make two points, Vic, and then I'll let you continue on, but all the surface parking lots were once something else. It is possible to construct surface parking.
Start tearing down buildings.
And that's exactly how all of them have been constructed. I mean, they were once something else. And so, that's not an impossibility. And there may come a time and a place when such a thing is available. I think Denny could probably name you one or two right now that he's mentioned to me that that could very well be a possibility in the downtown area where, you know, that it, it could happen. Second point is, I think Denny, in your issue sheet where you talked about, you know, here's our calculation of cost and it's around eleven thousand and I think that, or you expressed your opinion that we should only charge one-half of the cost of a stall. That isn't, was never my understanding of the ordinances that we read or discussed at Plan Commission or the ordinance that's before us tonight. It says the cost will be, the fee will be based on the cost. It doesn't say the fee will be based on one-half of the cost. And I assume that the fee would be whatever the cost is. It's a point, it's up to the council, but if you intend to do what Denny has in his issue sheet, then we need an amendment in there at a point to say that we'll have the engineer give us the cost and the fee will be fifty percent of that. I think that's a different animal than what.
In a rare alignment of the stars, you and I have exactly the same point. Because if the purpose of this ordinance is to create a fund to, to create new parking spaces for those we give up, we need to get actually the amount of money to create new parking spaces, not half the amount of money or the money for a surface spot when it has to actually be in a ramp or it has to actually cover the cost of a parking space. Otherwise, there's no point in this ordinance.
I, I agree with you, but I disagree with you on another point. And that is, we don't wanna create a penalty for a business choosing downtown instead of a surface area on the hill. We want to allow, you know, we already have ordinances here that say you need to build in a certain, with a certain style to match downtown. But if we double the parking ordinance, it creates a penalty for downtown. So I don't, I don't like the penalty idea.
But if that's the, you're saying that's the cost of a spot, whether it's downtown or up on the hill.
But that's why we've looked at.
So now what you're doing is you're subsidizing businesses.
Let me, let me speak my reason for why I'm suggesting half. You're not creating one off-street parking, you know, you've got, you've very got a shared parking situation downtown. You've got numerous businesses that are gonna use that parking stall. It's not gonna be just one business that's gonna use it. So cumulatively, that's where I'm coming from. And I said that when we first started talking about this. And Scott made the comment that, that, you know, it'd be X number of dollars per stall. And I said, no, I don't think so. It may be a quarter or a half or three-quarters of what the cost. I, I might put that comment out when we first started talking about this issue. And my position, and you know, certainly I'm only throwing out a recommendation, but my position is, these are shared stalls and you're, and by the number of businesses that are, would be eventually paying, there's sharing in the cost of those stalls. That's the reason, it's not a hundred percent in my perspective, in my opinion.
Which gets back to the presentation you made a couple of years ago about downtown parking planning. And, you know, 'cause if you, if you look at a lot of the parking lots we have in our current requirements, this is back to the study that you showed us, we have lots of lots that are half-full because they're not shared. Getting back to this logic that does every, every, every parking space get paid for by every business? Interesting.
Well, here's my point, that if you allow construction that would require ordinarily, let's say hypothetically, twenty parking spaces, and you collect enough money to create ten parking spaces, well, you can see that very quickly you run to the end game and you, we're the losers and downtown's the loser. Because there will not be enough parking under that formula. It just won't happen.
If you use the full price, which is what you're arguing, then you have, and you have three businesses that build, you've got three times as much money and maybe you can go vertical. But there are also, like this discussion, there's a number of places in downtown, we could create surface lots.
Well, then we need to build in the cost of demolition of those buildings and, and we haven't talked about that. And I don't want to right now.
But that gets back to our TID district discussion about when, what we use that TID money for, which we had talked about, using it for parking ramps and other things.
Okay, but I, I believe the mathematical formula remains true. If you get half, if you give up a hundred percent and get fifty percent in return, you're very quickly gonna give away everything you have and wind up with half of what you had. And you don't have enough money to build parking spaces.
Well, the issue that I have is this, can we still say no?
Well, no one's forced to do this.
Right.
Thing is, it's completely optional. Right now, you get to build a certain size building and you don't have any parking requirement in downtown.
Correct.
But if you wanna go above that, you have to start providing a certain amount of off-street parking. Since the council adopted that, have they forced anyone to do it? No. Because when push came to shove, we want the development. So what happens is, we all sit here and we want the development, so we waive the parking.
Right.
And then the next time someone comes and says you got a parking problem in downtown, who do you pin the tail on? Because the people are sitting right here. I mean, this is your chance to start doing something about it. And I, you know, yeah, Scott, I do agree with you. I think like if you look at Andy Crone's project, and they had the choice of maximizing the building on that lot, the footprint of the building, they're going to have the biggest building possible. Or shrinking the size of the building and supplying, I think it was five parking spots that they needed. So they had to shrink it about twenty feet. Hey, for fifty thousand dollars to be able to build that much bigger building in that prime downtown, that's gonna pay dividends forever. I think that the developers are gonna jump on this at ten thousand dollars a spot. And it's perfectly fair. I think it's fair and equitable for the citizens and the developers and everybody. And if they don't think it is, they won't do it. It's optional. It's, it's an optional plan to get them out from what we've already adopted as a parking requirement.
And back to my original argument, at full price, any place I build a building, I'm gonna have to put that much money into parking. So that's still a reasonable number.
Everywhere else in the city, there is a requirement, you know, it rarely goes less than one per two hundred square feet everywhere else.
Well, I'll move for first reading.
All right, so there's a motion for first reading of the ordinance and a second. The ordinance is, this one is what, seven, six dash ten? Any more discussion?
Is there any additional information you want to try to get to this number, this fee? And Kathy's got a few comments, I believe.
Well, I just wanted to let you know the comments I had on the ordinance. There's some language that I don't think is necessary. Once you establish the fee, this two A and B on the second page, and just some cleanup type language. But then also on management of the utility, I wanted to put some language in that clearly separates this as a parkman improved, or parking improvement fund within the parking utility. So it's separate from forfeitures and parking meter money because that section of the code deals with how those monies are used. So it's more just firming that up. It's not changing the intent and purpose, just making it clearer.
I'd like to defend the idea of leaving two A and B in. That's the adjustment that as construction costs or land costs go up, I mean, that's the place where we would adjust the fee.
Well, I thought that was covered under, I mean, and we can certainly talk about it. I did talk with Denny about this stuff, but at the top of the page, where does it say? Oh, council show, number one, periodically review the fees to determine the necessity for adjustments. And then it gives this guide. I thought that language there was confusing. But Danny and I can work on that to just make it clear what the intent is. I know you're going to periodically review it.
We'll talk about that some more then, so we don't bog down tonight before we come back. The idea of that was, if you took the example we were just using where they needed five spots, their fee isn't gonna be based on a five-stall parking lot, it'll be based on a ten-stall. And then if you had a bigger project where they wanted to pay in lieu of six to ten spots, the fee isn't based on ten, it's based on a thirty-stall parking spot. And that's the only place that that language is in here.
Well, I found it confusing, so just explain it and we can get the language so it's clear to some, a layperson reading it.
All right, any other discussion? Were you done with your?
Yep.
Ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. And the first reading is approved. That brings us on to resolution seven dash ten, the authorization to file a Wisconsin DNR grant fund application for targeted runoff management. Tom has stuck around for this and the idea here is we're giving authorization for Devon to file a grant application.
In two thousand eight, we did a Lake Maloo stormwater assessment. And as part of that stormwater assessment, this stormwater basin that we're proposing for this grant was the highest priority improvement that we could do to improve the stormwater runoff into Lake Maloo. So we, we are gonna try to get a DNR grant to construct this building or this stormwater pond. And we needed, needed this resolution as part of the grant. The grant was due the fifteenth of April, but we're gonna, we submitted it and we have permission to have it signed and sent in after this meeting tonight.
Move to suspend the rules.
All right, so there's a motion to suspend the rules, is there a second?
Second.
In a second, any discussion on the suspension? Roll call, vote.
Morissette?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Virchow?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Roll call?
Yes.
All right, the rules are suspended towards adoption, resolution seven dash ten. There are motion to approve the resolution by Mr. Morissette?
Move to adopt resolution seven dash ten.
Second.
In a second, O'Malley, any more discussion? This stormwater improvement is probably the single biggest thing that the city of Hudson could do to improve the water quality in Lake Maloo. We need to do it, it's an expensive project, be nice if we could get the grant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. And the resolution's adopted. All right, that concludes our items. We do not need to have closed session tonight. Well, I don't believe we do. I think we'll postpone that. Communications and recommendations from the mayor. I have a couple of things. One is in regard to the dear management, I will tomorrow night appoint an ad hoc committee, dear management committee. Number two and three, I have some proclamations. One is for Volunteer Week. Whereas the entire community can inspire, equip, and mobilize people to take action that can change the world. And whereas volunteers participate in activities through many schools, churches, clubs, and community service organizations, during National Volunteer Week, all over the nation, service projects will be performed and volunteers will be recognized for their commitment and assistance. And in the case of the city of Hudson, we have many volunteers on boards and committees and we wanna show our appreciation to them. Hudson residents have donated thousands of hours to improve and enhance our community. I do hereby proclaim April eighteenth to the twenty-fourth as National Volunteer Week in the city of Hudson. And encourage fellow citizens to volunteer and observe this week with programs and ceremonies recognizing volunteers. The second one is about Arbor Day. Whereas the holiday of Arbor Day began in eighteen seventy-two with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and is now observed throughout the nation and the world. I'm not sure if those are the first trees in Nebraska, but. That's a little prairie joke for you there. Trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And they're a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood, fuel for fires, and countless other wood products, and also a major engine for the economy of Wisconsin. The Hudson Middle School Forest represents a new vital partnership between the city, the school district, and parents and volunteers who helped in its creation. And the school forest provides a wealth of opportunities for education and recreation to people of all ages while improving its function as a stormwater management facility. I do hereby proclaim Friday, April thirtieth as Arbor Day and April twenty. and April twenty-fifth through May first as Forest Appreciation Week in the city of Hudson, and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart, and promote the well-being of this and future generations. That's one of the best ones she's ever written. Here, here, okay. Any council member have any items for future agendas?
I'd like to see that as soon as possible, we, uh, and I understand you'll be appointing an ad hoc committee tomorrow night that we put on the, uh, the quickest possible agenda, a resolution of what parts of the city will be concluded in dear management control.
I don't have a future agenda item, but I do have a comment. I'd like to thank all my fellow council members for the work that you do in the city, the mayor, and all of our city staff. Um, all of our, everybody who works for the city is dedicated and gives everything they have to making the city a great place for all of us to be, and all the residents that take the time to get involved in the community and make this a great place for all of us to live. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Anyone else? City attorney?
Nope.
City administrator? All right, we're ready to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.